Good evening, everybody. Glad you're all here. Looks like we'll have some entertainment tonight. And maybe some good comments and good welfare, so welcome. I'll make a motion to reconvene and open session at 7:00 P.M. Is there a second?
Second.
Second is made. All in favors by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion to seal the minutes of the closed session for the April 24th meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Second meeting roll call.
Chairman Borjett. Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Would you all please all stand with me and join me in the moment of silence and the fledgeboard. I pledge allegiance to God, of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Second meeting roll call, please.
Chairman Borjett.
Here.
Vice Chair Burke.
Here.
Mrs. Capwell.
Here.
Mrs. Nato.
Here.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Here.
I believe we have the middle school that's going to give us some great music tonight, so I'll turn it over to you. The chorus is coming in. Anybody listening at home, just this time, just dead air. We got a lot of folks coming in.
Please rise while we sing the National Anthem.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright lights and bright stars fill the perilous night? For the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming, and the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, showed through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you. This is the Wasake Middle School chorus. And I am Lydia Chapourian. I'm the choral director here in Hamlet. We would like to sing "This Is Me" from The Greatest Showman. So you're welcome to have a seat and rest a little bit and listen to us. Thank you.
I'm not a stranger to the dark. Hide away, they say, 'cause you're one of your broken parts. I learn to be the shape of all my stars. Hide away, they say, 'cause I will love you as you are. But I won't let them break me down to dust. I know that there's a place for us, for we are glorious. When the sharpest words gonna cut me down? When the sand and flood gonna drown them out? I am brave, I am bruised, I am who I'm meant to be. This is me. Look out, 'cause here I come. And I'm marching on to the beat I draw. I'm not scared to be seen. I make no apologies. This is me.
There we went to lunch and dinner in one of your art night halls. It was yummy. We also went on tour throughout the campus like through their major street, AI Lab and the library.
The next morning we went to URI and sat with them in one of their lecture halls. We learned about the college requirements and all the different majors they have in URI.
After that, we did another project where we were on parachutes and tried to keep the course by the students in their air lines.
So what we're gonna do last is we're gonna have everybody go through and introduce themselves really quickly and we're all gonna say one thing that we like about SMILE. So I like SMILE because it gives me a sense of community and I get to take on various roles and I really like that.
My name is Alana and SMILE is a great way to get out of your comfort zone.
My name is Aiden and the one thing I like about SMILE is that it allows you to experience things in the club and you can't outside of it.
My name is Anna and one thing I like about SMILE is how you're able to interact with other people that you've never met before and you're able to work with them and help make friends.
My name is Abro and one thing I like about SMILE is I get to make new friends and I learn new things.
My name is Leona and one thing I like about the SMILE community is that we stick together and we get to work, we get to work together as if we were a family even if we don't know each other.
My name is Victoria and I like how from the SMILE we can study like science and engineering with a bunch of people that like understand it and like it too.
My name is Ashley and the one thing I like about SMILE is that we get to create my different interests.
My name is Bubba and one thing I like about SMILE is that it helps me improve my team of skills.
Hi, my name is Andres and one thing I like about SMILE is that we're able to build relationships and collaborate with other kids from our school.
Hi, my name is Katie and I like SMILE because we get to do a lot of hands-on work that we don't normally get to do during class and it's really fun to problem solve.
Hi, my name is Arianna and what I like about SMILE is all the projects we design and I like helping build them too.
Hi, my name is William and one thing I like about SMILE is that we can work with people that we haven't met in maybe from a summer, from a grade, or even a cluster, which we can maybe help be friendly and understand it more.
Hi, I'm Natalia and what I think of what I like about the SMILE program is that I get to work with a lot more kids and so we get to work thoroughly through this project that we do.
Hi, my name is Matthew and the one thing I like about SMILE a lot is that we can still teamwork together because all of our projects are in groups of people that we have planned for.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth and the one thing I like about SMILE is the projects that we make and the decisions that we have to give because that really connects us more.
Hi, my name is Tija and one thing I like about SMILE is the leading teachers of the project community. Thank you.
So this is for all our presentation and I just wanna thank all of you for, from me and behalf of all the SMILE students for giving us this opportunity and funding our future. It really makes us proud that we can actually do all this engineering and it helps better us as students and learning, our learning. Thank you.
I want to take this opportunity to thank you students for giving us your presentation tonight. It's great to see that you love this program, that you're developing relationships as well as doing new and interesting things and I want to thank your teachers for guiding you and becoming the best students that you can be. Thank you again. If there are any folks out there that would like to address the school committee, please come to the podium, state your name and your address for the record, please.
Good evening. I'm the Reverend Dr. Donnie Anderson, the Executive Minister of the Maryland State Council of Churches. My home address is 277 Bishop Colbro in North Kingstown, Rhode Island. I had brought my sleeping bag just to be on the safe side. Actually, I started my teaching career here a long time ago. I'm here tonight because I know that you're going to be considering the policy regarding transgender students and gender nonconforming students in your school. I believe you have received the letter that several of us in the regular Albert community have signed regarding our great pleasure that you're addressing this issue, but some concerns that we have about some specifics regarding the policy. First of all, one regarding the definition of gender and then as it gets further down into I believe in section four, page four, where it talks about bathrooms and changing rooms. We have, we think you did a lot of great work, we really applaud that, but we do have some very specific concerns about those issues and they're addressed very specifically in this letter. The other thing I would just say is I'm so glad I got to be here to hear your chorus. I mean, what beautiful children and to hear them sing that song about allowing students to be themselves. You know, I mean, I just have to believe that the only reason you'd come out night after night to work at school committee because I know it's thankless work a lot of times, but you're here because you love kids. And there's no question that you have known people in your system that are transgender, gender nonconforming, or bi- or bi- or students and they deserve every chance in the world to see their greatest self be developed and if they find their greatest self, that'll just enrich the whole community. So I hope as you consider this policy and look at our concerns and address those concerns so that the policy might be the very best it could be. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that wants to address the school committee?
Hi, my name is Bill Sager and I'm the President of the National Order Society. First, I'd like to apologize that my other officers can't be here with me tonight and I'd also like to apologize that we weren't able to be here any other night but this night. We did send out emails for save the dates to you guys and here's the potato physical invitations now. The National Order Society is seeing induction is May 20th at 6:30. If you will be speaking, the email will be in the bottom, so just email me in the emails that we can start doing the script and thank you so much and look out.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I see we have someone else who would like to address the school committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. John Brandt, 200 Woodland Road here in Woodsocket. I'm also 1988 graduate of Woodsocket High School, class president junior and senior year, and I'm here to speak about what is before you tonight. I want to start by saying it was amazing to hear the singers tonight and to see the heights at the Woodsocket High School auditorium a few weeks ago and, you know, when you see things like that, like I seriously can sit back and say how awesome it is to see where the kids are and what they're doing and I was listening to the kids sing earlier and I always, what my daughters would refer to me saying is I got teary eyed, so, but it's great to see kids from Woodsocket doing really good things and moving, moving people. They moved me and that was moving, the play was moving and I moved every day. I'm here to address what you have on your agenda tonight, ladies and gentlemen of the school committee, which is the transgender students' policy. Look, I just want to say, what I find most amazing in speaking to our daughters about where high school is today, I graduated in 1988 and you couldn't be gay in high school. You couldn't be, I mean, you couldn't be. And if you were, not only were you the bravest soul, but you were probably having a tough time. Transgender was not, wasn't even, that wasn't even on radar. It was, it was, it was different back then and the special needs kids were treated differently and the homosexual kids were treated differently and the folk school kids were treated differently and it was such, Mr. Chairman, is there any time left? There's five minutes because I gotta get my, what I have to say quickly.
And I would do that.
Oh, really? Okay. It was different back then and the cliques and, and whatever. It was just different and the fact that we're here tonight looking at this policy is great. I would say it's great and I would say it's a real advancement of where we are as a society and where we are with, with what we think about is important and what's not important, et cetera, et cetera. I come to you tonight, that overall the policy is what it is and you're gonna pass the policy most likely in one form or another, but I do come with a specific complaint, Mr. Chairman, and my specific complaint is in regard to section six, let me make sure. Yeah, section six, dress codes, Mr. Chairman, and in the section six it says, "The colors of caps and gowns worn by students at graduation ceremonies shall not be differentiated based on gender." And I have a real problem with that, Mr. Chairman, as a graduate of 1988. The kids of 2015, 16, 17, and 18 should have a problem with that as well. For tradition in this school and for the Villanovans is to graduate where girls wear white and boys wear, I almost started to mean men now, but boys wear maroon. And I understand that tonight's policy is about inclusiveness and it's about making accommodations and it's about making allowances and I am not here to browse about that and about the things that you weigh and you may or will do as a part of this policy. What I am here to say is that the movement in this country tells you that there are no differences anymore and it's not true, that there is no male and there is no female, there is no father, there is no mother, there is no differentiation between the sexes. That is not true. I understand that males will want to feel the need to and the desire to, to transition to female and, and women will do the same, vice versa. But as long as we have this conversation, we cannot make biology not so. We cannot say science is not science, we cannot say logic is not logic. I have no problems with a man or a woman who identifies as the opposite sex and wants to do so, but in doing so, we cannot punish those who don't do that and we do this. What you're saying tonight is you're going to approve a section in your policy that says the following, "We will make sure inclusiveness in restrooms and accommodations are the case, but if you are a female and you want to wear white, you are not allowed to do so because now we're penalizing you for being female. We're penalizing you for being one of the two sexes and we're saying, no, everybody's the same." Ladies and gentlemen of the school committee, everybody is not the same. Everybody is not the same. And to pretend that's the case defies logic, defies science, and defies everything that we know. If a female identifies as a male and wants to wear a maroon gown, I'm all for it. And if, and if a male identifies as a female and wants to wear a white gown, I'm all for it. That's not even why I'm here, because you're gonna approve this policy and it's going in. What I'm here to say is if a female wants to wear white, you're deliberating that they can't and that's not right. Let the kids choose because you as the administrators are choosing that they need to have bathrooms and they need to have a safe space and they need to have a program with the nurse and the parents and the administration and the teachers and the principals. You're deciding all that. That's cool. But you as the adults are taking away their decision to wear what they want to wear and for some of them will be the biggest day of their lives. Please, if you pass this tonight, please amend the legislation or the policy to take out section six or at least amend it to say choice. Kids should have the choice. You can't do that to them. Not everybody's the same. Don't treat them that way. And in this religion that we've created of inclusiveness, which I understand, you can't leave the kids behind that are just being themselves, waking up every day and being themselves, just like we're making a policy for the kids to waking up and being themselves. I'm also here tonight, Mr. Chairman, and I do apologize for the length. I always, I sometimes name it quickly. Section nine of, in the back you have in regard to athletics, it's page 19. And it says, "Students should be able to participate in activities in accordance with their gender identity," which is defined on page one of the policy, "into scholastic athletics may require additional considerations." Mr. Chairman, if you'll please be with me for another moment to tell you about this article that I have that says, "It's not equal. Parents' operations, transgender athletes continue to dominate girls' sporting events." This is from the Washington Times. A couple of points in this article. Recently, a Connecticut high school transgender athlete transitioning to female won the 55 meter dash at the state open indoor track championships, setting a new girls' indoor record. Another transgender athlete placed second. An opponent sprinter said fairness is the issue. She missed out on qualifying for the New England Regionals and a chance to run in front of college coaches because of the two transgender males that were now on the girls' team. And I quote, "We all know the outcome of the race before it starts. It's demoralizing," she told the Times. "I support and I'm happy for these athletes for being true to themselves. They should have the right to compete and express themselves in school, but athletics has always had an extra rules to keep the competition fair." There are other examples, Mr. Chairman, where a biological man who identified as a female won a women's world championship cycling event and a boy who identified as a girl won the Texas state wrestling championship. Why do I say this to you, Mr. Chairman? I say this because in here, what we're saying is you should be able to play the sport that you identify with. Well, I'm here to tell you and we all know this to be true. If we just said tonight, let's just take boys and girls students and put girls on the varsity basketball team, baseball team, soccer team, or football team and it was a tryout, they wouldn't make it. They would not make it. They can't. But if we put a male on the girls' soccer, basketball, softball team, track team, they would make it. Why? Because they're males competing with female bodies, they have testosterone in their bodies that females don't have. What we're doing is we're setting up our girls in this community who need athletics, who need scholarships, who need looked at by college for extracurricular activities, no matter what it is, that if someone comes into school and says, "I identify as a female and I want to be on the girls' basketball team," a girl who has worked all her life to be on the high school team may not make it. That's not fair. In your policy, you could say, "If there's not enough spots to fill a team," you could do that and you could have made your policy to say that because if there's a vacancy on the team, the team has to forfeit, much like North Smithfield High School did recently or other schools that will have no team because they don't have enough and there are transgender students that want to make up that team, that's great. I totally, totally believe in that. But to take females who have competed all their lives in sports to have to try and compete next to transgender males, it's not fair. It's, kids in Woodsocket have a hard enough time. Look, attorney at court might say, "Well, the state says we have to do this." Okay. Riot says you have to do this. Rhode Island Scholastic League says you have to do this, but you don't have to do it. That's what courts are for. Let them take you on. Become a test case. Say that we're standing up for our students. That's why there's the ability to go to court. All I'm saying to you is this notion that the state says we have to do this and the riot says we have to do this, so we have to do this. You guys are the elected officials, you guys are the ones that can make the choice, you guys that can put up the fight, so put it up. As far as I'm concerned, put it up because we owe our students that. I won't take any more time, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. I think if you're gonna approve policy as a whole, that's a mistake. If you're going to amend it, there are portions you could, I think you should fight. The Rhode Island Scholastic League and I think you can do that and it would be pretty cool to see Woodsocket be a vanguard on the legal scene, fighting for kids that need scholarships and time in front of college coaches that are gonna lose it and make no mistake, and I've been part of this, they're never be satisfied until there are five transgender boys who won the state championship. That's the only way, there's never gonna be any give here. It's never gonna end, there's never gonna be enough. That's the progressive movement and I hate to say that to the progressives in the room, but you actually know it's true. Stand up for the students, not the politics. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the school committee?
Estelle Pappal, 648 Doran, Woodsocket, Rhode Island. My three daughters came to Woodsocket School and they've always made friends with everyone. They never even, you know, male, female, the lower, the people, the kids that they, that were set aside, those were the best ones and just to begin, you know that. That being said, we need to lead the colors, but like Mr. John Brandt had said, we need to just twist the rules. Like if the girls want to wear maroon, hey, you know, believe it, that's, that's, this is our city. This is our history. We're gonna start changing everything because of this? No, no. And, and like I said, everybody comes in all different shapes, sizes, colors, and you name it, but this needs to stick and we are all loaded for you guys, so, and we're standing behind you. Let's make Woodsocket great again. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the school committee?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. Jeff Parton from Woodsocket Community Field, President. Unfortunately, I continue to go after eloquent speakers, so I will not be eloquent anywhere near an eloquent. So this evening I have a couple of things for you. I stood up here in January and spoke about a fighting policy and I know you're starting to bring forth a number of policies this evening, but that still hasn't been on the agenda, so I would like to just bring that to your attention. One thing that is on the agenda tonight is some stipends for individual positions. Two weeks ago, I stood up here and said that if we can get the contract going here, then, you know, we can, there would be no need for those stipends, so we're hoping and I know that there is a little bit more urgency as I stand here tonight and I'm hopeful that we can finish this contract negotiation in a very timely fashion. However, the stipends should be posted, well, stipends should be posted and I hope that if they are gonna be permanent positions, that they will be posted going further even after we settle the contract. So I'll leave that where it is. Last, there's a note before the General Assembly called Contract Continuation. Some believe that it's called evergreen. Obviously, I don't, but I wanted to point out something to you. I was asked to my position by WPRI the other night, so I was, was on there and I wasn't on there, but they asked me to comment, so I did. And one of the things that I noted at the end, which they did pick up, because of course they don't pick up everything that you say, but one of the things that they did pick up was the fact that even though we are without a contract, I complimented the school committee and the administration on following the terms and conditions of that expired contract. So although some people believe that it's evergreen, as you know, it's not necessarily true. We're simply following through with what already exists and I would like to say thank you to the committee for, and the administration for ensuring that they have in fact followed that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the school committee?
Good evening, folks. My name is Stephen Alexander. I represent the Commission on Prejudice and Bias in the State of Rhode Island. I just would like to address the concerns that the previous gentleman, I forget his name, if you know whether he's still here, and I appreciate that viewpoint and the debates that are now happening across the country. I am an educator. I'm also a coach in athletics. I also happen to be trans and I do trainings for educators regarding why this policy is of the utmost importance even in addressing the inclusion for different robes. The children or the students will have opportunities in which to vary in their garb, but to keep inclusion with that, sorry, I'm a little nervous here actually as well. When addressing the issue of biology, we have to look deeper in dialogue and discussions when it comes to identity and sex. The general notions of biological sex are that of just simply the primary anatomy where in fact we now know, science-based, evidence-based, education-based, that it goes a lot deeper where it's, it deals with chromosomes, hormones, and also secondary sex characteristics. Each of those elements are at play within the human body and human anatomy and physiology. And in terms of the fear of transgender girls having an advantage, that is one example in Connecticut that is sensationalized in the media where we know that there are no real Olympians or outstanding athletes and that's just a misnomer and I can go into more detail on that as well. So with that consideration, I do think that the policy in terms of the latins and the motines and the mountains, they need to be addressed a little bit more clearly to define and to protect the specifics of the policy, which is to protect transgender nonconforming students. And also the definition of gender is tied to biological sex. That definition needs to be widened, to be more inclusive based on the information that I just recently shared with you. So again, biological sex is no longer just primary sex characteristics. It includes a vast array of dynamics within the human body and that the policy moving forward, you amend and for the sake and safety of all students, we're able to have deeper dialogue when it comes to curriculum as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the school committee?
My name is Monica Green. I actually didn't come to address the school committee. I actually came to watch my daughter sing the chorus and play the band and she's also part of the SMILE program. But the topic of the robes was brought up for graduation and my son is a But the topic of the robes was brought up for graduation, and my son is a senior, and I have watched it play out in my own house, and how upsetting it is for him and his classmates, that there is an argument over the robes. It's simple. If a girl or somebody who feels they identify as a girl wants to wear a white robe, let them wear a white robe. If a boy wants to wear a maroon robe, or somebody who identifies, you know, a boy wants to wear a maroon robe, let them wear a maroon robe, like it was said previous. This is Wunsaket. This is the colors of our city. You know, I didn't grow up here, but it feels like where I grew up. And I feel that community, not just in the school system, but in the systems outside of the school system. And those colors are worn proudly by the students. It is very upsetting, not just for me as a parent, but for my son, and what about my girls, you know? I think if the legislature going forward is going to be that maroon is the color, it should be amended and allow the students to wear what the Wunsaket colors are, maroon and white. I thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the school committee, please?
Hi, Emily Mandeville, 8157. I don't have a child in Wunsaket School anymore. He graduated. I graduated, class of eighty-eight. I don't know, I just, I just feel like others have said, if someone identifies as a male, let them choose to wear the maroon. I think it should be choice that way. The choosing, I don't know, I just, I need to sit down, I'm going to swear. But I think if, I don't think one color, I think it should be choice, maroon or white. If you, if you identify as female, you choose white. If you identify as male, you choose maroon. I personally don't identify as male. I choose white, and I don't want, I wouldn't want that choice to be taken away from you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the school committee? Seeing and hearing none?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
We would like to address the school committee.
Yes, we do. The school committee will be doing good and well fair right now. Hall 4J, 365 Melon Street, Wunsaket, Rhode Island. Today is a special day for our district. It's a special day all over the country. It's Administrative Assistant Day, and a lot of people throughout the country are just excited to have good administrative assistants, and they're celebrating them, and they're providing them with gifts and charm, with affection, and we would like to do the same and acknowledge our phenomenal admin assistant, Kimberly Blaze. Thank you for being our special admin assistant. And I'll ask Dr. McGee, it was, no, no, that's all right, recognitions and announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two recognitions that I'd like to make this evening. Number one, I'd like to recognize the amazing Wunsaket Middle School band and chorus and teachers, music teachers, that work tirelessly with them. I'm sure that Ms. Alves and Mr. Devoe from the high school are anxiously awaiting, after we saw the performance that we saw tonight, are anxiously awaiting the arrival of our middle school students to the high school in the near future. I'd also like to recognize our incredibly articulate and talented Smile students from Wunsaket Middle School. They demonstrated this evening that they are not only intelligent, caring students, and we're very, very proud that they are all our students. They are what makes Wunsaket such a great community, and I want to thank their teachers who are here. Some of the teachers are here this evening. Would you please stand? I'd like to recognize you as well. Yes, please stand. And we're very, very thankful for all that you do for our students. That's all I have. Thank you.
Anyone else want to address the recognitions and announcements? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the recognition announcements. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, I'll make a motion to approve the April tenth, two thousand nineteen, open session minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Any corrections, additions? If not, Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman 4J, yes. Placed Chair Burr, yes. Mrs. Capwell?
Upstaying.
Mrs. Nato?
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we'll go on to the consent agenda. I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second? Does any member, is there any member that would like to take any item out of the consent agenda, take it out of the law? If not, Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman 4J, yes. Placed Chair Burr, yes. Mrs. Capwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Nato?
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas?
Yes.
Next, we'll go on to communications. There are none. Then we'll go into the school committee reports, and start with the finance committee. We met recently, and we discussed basically the upcoming budget. We sat with Mr. Perrier, and went line item by line item, and I'm going to defer to him later on, as we get to that section, to talk about the budget and also to talk about the financial update. But this is moving along, and we have the date of May first to send our budget to the, to the, to the city and the city council, and they will be finalizing their budget somewhere around June twelfth, June, June second, I believe, June second. And that means that everything hopefully will be wrapped up at that point. But if not, what we're going to be submitting to the city council is going to be a budget that's not going to include the results of the, of the contracts that are presently in negotiation. So we will be sending, we're sending a preliminary budget to the city to be finalized once the contracts are finalized. Because if we don't, until they finalize and get all the final numbers, whether from state or the contracts, we'd be playing with, you know, inaccurate numbers, not finalized numbers. So we're going to have to hold and wait for that. So I'll make a motion to receive and place on file which report. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, I'll turn it over to the Policy Subcommittee. Mrs. Kapiskas?
Placed Chair Burr. The Policy Subcommittee doesn't have much to report, other than at our last Subcommittee meeting, we reviewed the final draft of the transgender policy, which I believe everyone is starting to become quite familiar with, with the proposal that it was recommended to the full school committee for its review and authorization. I do not know what is happening with that tonight. I can express some of the things that were discussed somewhat in response to what's been said here tonight. We went back and forth on the issue of caps and gowns, but eventually concluded, as an entire committee, an entire Subcommittee, at that point, we were all in favor of going with one color, with the understanding that, and to clarify, the caps and gowns would be maroon. There's a sash that would be worn by students that is essentially as stole, as previously wear, that would represent the white. We discussed other ways to potentially incorporate the white in caps and gowns, but the purpose we were looking at one solid color was so that students who are transgender or non-binary were not being required to divulge one way or another what they wanted to be, whether they wanted to wear either maroon or white. And I understand that that's the point of choice, but some, you need to understand that for some of these students who come from families or cultures that are not accepting of alternate lifestyles, like someone who's non-binary or transgender or gender fluid, that could be a threat to them. They could be threatened physically, they could be threatened emotionally, and the thought was to remove that threat, so as not to make the student choose between, I'm going to show everyone, today's the day, I'm going to show everyone that now I'm male and I'm going to pick maroon, or I'm scared and I don't want to show my family, so I have no choice and I have to lie and pick white. And that's why we were looking at maroon, but at no time was the intention to make everything maroon. It was maroon with white reflected. We've all heard from Harrods students before, when the policy was announced for this graduation year, which is since then we've seen it, and certainly since I placed this on Facebook, we tried to bring it to everyone's attention because they wanted everyone to have an opportunity to be heard on that to your issue, because it was a hot button issue. There are certainly opinions both ways. I've heard opinions both ways, but that was our motivation, in looking at a single color for caps and gowns, to avoid putting our students in that dangerous position of having to choose. If that's what people want, we will certainly bring it back to committee and discuss that further. I believe there are other changes that we need to make in court, so it's a communication we've received to, in order to make our policy better comply with law guidance, but we haven't reached that point yet. And as to the issue of any other policies that we've discussed, one of them we have discussed is student-on-student violence, student-on-student violence. We do intend to get there, but understand, this transgender policy was due to the state last July, so it absolutely was a priority to get this policy in place. And I can virtually guarantee you that at some point, the Policy Subcommittee will be meeting before the next school committee meeting, because we intend to have this policy on for approval, one way or another, modified or not, at our next meeting, because it has to go live. We are way past the deadline. Part of that is the elected, rest-assigned school committee, not having a quorum in our school committee for many months, and now we're in a position to act on it, and we're acting on it as quickly as we can, but as thoughtfully as we can as well. Once we clear this hurdle, the intention is to then launch those other policies. They've certainly been discussed with council, that we want to develop policies around those issues and how everyone responds to student-on-student violence and student-on-staff violence. It's a lot of dead issue. We haven't forgotten about it, we simply haven't gotten to it, because this has been the priority. And that is the conclusion of our report.
In terms of my comments on this Policy Subcommittee report, is, I'll defer that when we get to actually discussing the policy itself. Is there anybody else that wants to address the committee regarding the Policy Subcommittee report?
Don't use this moment.
I'll make a motion, receive and place on file the Policy Subcommittee report. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we'll go on to the financial update, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Perrier.
Hey, Mr. Chairman.
What's up?
This evening, you have in front of you the March twenty nineteen fiscal update of the Wunsaket Education Department. Overall, month over month, looking back at February, really not a lot to report in terms of changes. Projections are holding, holding steady from February from the month before. I will review some financial highlights. On the revenue side, all our revenues are currently projected to be on target for the year. Two categories that aren't are rental income and Medicaid revenue. Rental income at this time is projected to be about seventy-one thousand dollars ahead of budget, and Medicaid revenue is projected to be about a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars ahead of budget. As of right now, we have a six-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand-dollar one-time transfer in this, in this report to balance the budget. Last month, to give you the update, it was seven-hundred-thousand dollars, so we reduced it slightly, but it has remained fairly steady month over month. On the expenditure side, our salaries are currently one-point-seven-six million dollars under budget, and again, to kind of touch on that, it was due to, during the budgeting process, we had some raises set aside. We still haven't completed the contract, so upon completion, I think we're going to see cutting into that a little bit. Our medical expenses have also held fairly steady over last month, one-point-three-million over budget as of the end of March, and that's been about a decrease of about sixty-one-thousand dollars over last month's projection. As for out-of-district tuitions, we've had a slight uptick this month. We're one-point-oh-four-million dollars over budget, and that's about an eighty-thousand-dollar increase over our estimate over last month. And also, because of that uptick, we've also had a slight uptick in transportation, so we're about six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars over budget projected June thirtieth right now. And finally, as you saw in the purchases, there were some additional beachback purchases. We're currently two-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand dollars over budget there. I think with the end of heating season, though, we're looking to decrease that number, and hopefully we'll make up some ground as we get towards the end of the year. Currently, overall, this leaves us with about a nine-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand-dollar overall deficit from the general fund, and our, but in our overall month-over-month deficit has actually stayed quite the same as well. It's only gone up by nine-thousand dollars. So again, looking over from last month to this month, even those additional expenses that we were talking about, we're still holding very steady in terms of our overall financial situation when compared month over month.
Thank you. Is there any one that has any comments, questions, or Mr. Perrier? Hearing none, I'll make a motion, receive and place on file the financial update. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Dr. McGee, well, first, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the two thousand nineteen, two thousand and twenty school year calendar for second asking. Is there, are there any questions, comments regarding the calendar? Is there a second?
Second.
If none, Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman 4J, yes. Placed Chair Burr, yes. Mrs. Capwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Nato?
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas?
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the authorization execution of all non-human contracts. First, the motion is to remove it from the table. We tabled this last time, so this, this motion is to remove it from the table. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, roll. Dr. McGee?
Chairman 4J, yes. Placed Chair Burr, yes. Mrs. Capwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Nato?
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas?
Yes.
Now, I'll make a, a motion to discuss and approve the authorization and execution of all non-human contracts. Dr. McGee?
Chairman 4J?
Yeah, we want to discuss that. Yeah, sure. You want to speak about it a little bit?
I would love to, sure. So, Mr. Chairman and members of the school committee, you have before you the non-human contracts.
Yes.
They, they have been vetted by the, our council and by the school department, and they're in your hands to sign. So, any questions with respect to, to the process? I would be glad to answer any questions.
Mr. Chairman?
Placed Chair Burr?
Dr. McGee, these contracts are for the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year?
So they're, they're retroactive?
Correct. And the, okay. Correct. And on some of those sheets, when it says a two-year contract, that means this would be every year one, and that, that should be your two.
Yes, that's correct.
For those that have a one-year contract?
Will expire time, actually, very quickly.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, some of these contracts have been signed by the mayor?
They have.
They have, yes. They have somewhere, somewhere, so we, we... They have somewhere, somewhere, so we, so I'll be signing by the 20th. They are all approved, and we have 31 of them, 31 contracts before us. Are there any other questions, comments?
Chairman Borje.
Mrs. Nato.
As we discussed, there are several people who may need to gather to this list, and I believe that Human Resources is checking them to make sure that everyone who should be on this list is on the list.
I agree with you. Those minutes that are not on here will be added, and we'll be holding on them the next year.
And will they get a two-year contract?
Yes.
So is everyone that is one of the two that's on this list, what?
Dr. McGee. So, those that have a one-year contract which would expire on June 30th, the evaluation process, which is, has really started in the beginning of the school year, which will remain in effect until the end of the school year, a decision will be made for those one-year contracts as to whether they would be a one-year for the next school year or two years. So that's in the process right now, between now and the end of the school year.
Okay, so what do you do with the people that are two and one-year and starting going on? Bring them all on?
Well, that's, so they won't necessarily all expire at the same time. There will be some, just by the nature of some receiving one versus some receiving two, they won't all expire on the same, at the end of the same school year.
Now, with this list, is with the 2% increase?
Yes, that's correct.
Is the 2% increase just for one year or is it here? So the salary is absolutely the same?
That's correct. Yes, that is correct.
Any other comments? Dr. McGee will call.
Chairman Borje, yes. Place Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Catwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kupiskis.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the transgender policy for first passage. Mrs. Kupiskis? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. We have received, I'll start, we have received a letter this today, actually. Thank you very much for the letter, for the concerns that you have, and we're not sure which draft you saw. So we've already done looking at your letter and looking to make amendments to this policy, because we want to make sure that the policy we get is approved by ROD, is approved by the A C O M. So that is, so any changes that may be made when you're going back to the subcommittee, for them to look at and actually go through your concerns and any adjustments or that we may make to that policy. In addition, we've spoken about the gowns, and there's been quite a bit of an outcry. Maybe that's a little strong, but at least voiced some opinion with regards to maroon and white. The tradition in this city has been, girls wear white, boys wear maroon. I don't think anyone in this school would care whether you wore white or maroon. If you want to wear white, wear it. If you want to wear maroon, you wear it. But that has to be an amendment to the policy. Right now, the policy does not address that. So, I'm going to make a motion right now to table this policy and send it back to the subcommittee for amending, or at least we're looking at it and making any changes, and it'll come back to us at the next meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. McGee will call.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Place Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Catwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kupiskis.
Yes.
The policy is tabled and will be revisited at our next meeting.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, may I just say thank you? Your attentiveness and your seriousness, and what you're approaching this subject, thank you so much.
Hold on a second.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve certain stipends for end-of-year school events. Dr. McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the school committee.
Do you have to hold on that? Who, second, do you have a second?
Oh, second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Questioner Burke.
Good call.
Good call.
Next. Yes, another two. We have two seconds. Oh, sorry. Who's better than one? Dr. McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The committee has in its Chromebook a spreadsheet that is broken up into a variety of columns, and the, let me sort of explain before I get into the actual, the numbers that we see here, the description, is that there are many events, end-of-year events in the school department, across the district, really at any level, from kindergarten to grade 12, where there are, in some of those events, there are staff that currently receive a stipend to facilitate those types of events. There are also events that are held across the district where there are staff that act as chaperones or volunteers to those different types of events. As we all know, that the teachers are being worked to rule this year.
Yes.
We want to try to avoid the situation where we would not have staff that would be either chaperoning or coordinating these events who otherwise are not receiving a stipend for those activities. So what we have done is we've sent out emails to, and I know Mrs. Kupiskis and Kim Waze, among others, have sent out emails and have had conversations with administrators across the district to determine which events, end-of-year events, we have, what the dates are, and approximately the number of staff members that would chaperone or help to coordinate, who otherwise would not be receiving a stipend. So what you have here is, you have a list of, a description of the activity, the end-of-year activity, the date that those activities are scheduled for. You have a column that lists the number of stipend advisors, because as I said, there are some events where there are advisors who are receiving a stipend. However, we would need more than just those staff that are receiving a stipend to coordinate, to chaperone those events. So you have the number, the approximate number of chaperones, the hours approximately that those chaperones would be working, and the hourly rate, which we have established here is $30 an hour. And then the last column would be the salary for each of those events, and at the bottom there is the total cost to the district, so that we have staff numbers that are there so that we don't have to cancel these events.
Dr. McGee, I don't see, I guess I don't see any events for the elementary schools?
Correct.
Of all the graduations, I know there was at least schools that happened at nine or five o'clock that would have been outside of the rules.
So, so we, so they're going to move those to the contractions, school day, the late school day. So with respect to the elementary activities, end-of-year activities, we don't have, that would be extended beyond the contractions school day.
Any comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Chair Burke.
Thank you. I feel there's no surprise that I have been a teacher for four years, and as a teacher, I consider myself a professional. Troubles me a little bit that we have to pay our teachers to do some things that I would consider to be part of their professional status as educators now. I do understand, I'm also a member of the union, teachers union in Massachusetts, so I do understand the work to rule, and I accept that as the right of the teachers. But I would think, and I would hope, that this stipend that we have provided teachers is an emergency, it's not something that should be, I don't think every year maybe I'll be voted, this might be voted in, and I may be voted out, who knows what. But it troubles me too, because also the reason why we are doing this is not for the teachers, we're doing it for the students, because as Dr. McGee said, we would have to cancel some of these events if we could not get the teachers to come. And hitting that, that troubles me, because remember, our goal, our purpose as educators is for our students. And, you know, I approve this as necessary because I want our students to have the needs and to have the activities that they are due. And I guess if this is the way we have to work around work to rule, then so be it. But I do want to say, and I am troubled by this, but I would obviously approve it. Thank you.
Chairman.
I want to just underline what Mr. Burke has said. It hit us that this became a fire drill. First of all, we said, we're coming to end of year, we're still negotiating, what in the world's going to happen towards the last two months if the contracts aren't signed? Whether we work to rule? We acknowledge it, we know, we have to go through it, but what about the students? What about their families? And so there was a heck of an effort by everyone here and elsewhere in the school district to really find out what events needed to be covered and how many people needed to cover, because there were certain events that were being threatened to be canceled, and that just couldn't happen. So I'm very glad that we got this scheduled, that we put it together, in that, you know, for this year, we'll pay the stipends, and hopefully next year we don't have to deal with this, because, you know, it seems to me that teachers would be loved, and loved, especially when their students are coming to the end of their career, you just celebrate with them. You celebrate their exceptional results in how they reach the end of their high school career or transition into another school, how fantastic, and how we celebrate with them. Is there any other, any other comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Nato.
Okay, so if a contract is signed before the events take place, is that negating the stipend then? Does it go away?
I would say yes.
Okay. Because I agree with Mr. Chairman Borje and Mr. Burke.
I don't think it's going to happen.
Well, okay, but I wish it would happen, because I understand fully work to rule, but I really am having a hard time with the stipends that have to be paid to teachers to do end-of-school events. And I'm morally, I don't agree with it. I will support it for the children, but I morally do not agree that that should happen. I could see myself as an educator, and I would step up to a point, I don't care if it's work to rule, whatever, I would just do what I thought was my responsibility to the benefit. That's it.
You know, we hope that the contracts get signed, that they get finalized, that they get approved, and it's got to be done right by both our negotiating committee and the negotiating committee. They have to do it right. City council has a certain drop dead date in terms of finalizing the city contract within, I mean, the city budget as well as our budget, and it would be good to have it all done at the same time, and it'd be fine. But we'll have to wait and see. This is a provisional measure, Mrs. Nato, just in case. Let's hope that it gets done, the contracts get signed and wrapped up sooner than this. Anyone else? Mrs. Kupiskis.
I think I echo the opinions of Mrs. Nato and Mr. Burke that I'm concerned that these stipends could be setting a dangerous precedent, and we'll be facing this issue at the end of each school year, whether or not we have a contract. That's concerning to me. However, I don't think that our students should suffer as a result of the continuing battles going on at higher levels than they have anything to do with. I also think that I'm saddened, because I was part of compiling the list, that the decision's been made to move the elementary school events, graduations, et cetera, fifth-grade promotions, whatever you want to call it, to the daytime, because that just cut out, although it solves the problem for the teachers, it cuts out a significant amount of parents from being able to attend their students' promotions and graduations, and that saddens me tremendously. As a parent who's participated in those for one child and was not able to participate in them for the other child for other reasons, to miss those because you have to work saddens me. But I understand that we need to try to contain the bleeding, so to speak, and try to limit the number of stipends we're going to be paying, just to get us through the end of this school year. But it's sad that these fifth graders will never have another shot to have mom and dad sitting in the audience and watch them leave. That saddens me. But I do, I am concerned this is setting a dangerous precedent, but I understand that we need to do it as everyone else has expressed, because the children shouldn't suffer.
We do this for the children, so even though we must deal with these stipends, and we will deal with them with a good heart, because it's all about the kids. Anyone else? Dr. McGee will call.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Place Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Catwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kupiskis.
Yes.
Next, we'll go to a discussion of how district students' participation in a national and honor society. I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mrs. Kupiskis.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I've been discussing this issue literally for years. It's now coming to a head as far as I'm concerned personally. I have a son who's a junior in high school, who is a straight student, has his report card, and if anybody doesn't believe me, wants people to look at him, I'd be happy to show them to you. There are two B's. They were in the first quarter of the ninth grade, they were overcome, his final grades are all A's, and he's entering into his last quarter as a junior in high school. He does not happen to matriculate at the Salk High School because he has disabilities. He has autism, he has anxiety, he has ADHD, all of which manifest in behaviors, which has mandated his placement in out-of-district school. In his case, AB Hill Site on Main Street, which most people don't even know exists. The bottom line is, I've been inquiring since ninth grade and before as to whether or not out-of-district students are allowed to participate in all school events. I've been promised all along, absolutely. Wants to be a fan, he can, wants to be a core, he can, with one exception so far, that only thing he's tremendously interested in is National Honor Society. And no matter what I've said, I've gotten nowhere with regard to trying to have him and similarly situated students included in the National Honor Society. And it's my understanding that now he's a junior, because that induction occurred in January, that should have sailed for my son. And that's not fair, because he's going to graduate in 2020 wearing whatever cap and gown he decides he's going to wear, but essentially deprived of the ability to wear an honor sport, of the ability to wear a yellow tuxedo, which signifies that he's in the National Honor Society, something he deserves just as much as every other student who crosses the stage at the Salk High School. That's disparate treatment. My son is receiving disparate treatment because of his disability, but that doesn't have any meaning to anyone. It should. And if I have to go that way, as Mr. Green said earlier tonight, if you have to go to the courts, you go to the courts. And there's at least 50 other similarly situated students in out-of-district placements that were otherwise qualified for participation in National Honor Society, and just because their parents are advocating doesn't mean they don't have the thing right. I'm not going away before I may not be here, but it's going to be somewhere. And I'm going to be heard for my son, for the students that come behind him, and I certainly hope that the other special ed parents and gen ed parents, especially the parents of the students in the National Honor Society, can understand what I'm talking about, and that my student has worked... And that my student has worked as hard, if not harder, than some gen ed students to get those A's in his school. And he's as deserving as most children are.
But Dr. Sullivan says she has additional information for us.
Yeah, I reached out to the National Honor Society, which is headquartered in Virginia. I found out students can be accepted through 12th grade, which is good news.
Yes.
The downside is that they cannot be accepted into St. John schools. They have to go through their own school. So I've reached out to several of our out-of-district schools. They have to apply and have their own organization within their school. They can also, they can use, and so I've talked to them on the phone, I've got stuff written that I can share with you later. Accommodations are supposed to be written into their bylaws, but then for individual students, we can still make additional accommodations. So I've reached out to a couple of our schools to ask if they'd be interested in doing that.
So essentially, everything that I've been told all along, that my son can participate in anything that St. John offers, is excluded down to society.
Right, so St. John has tried to include the students in everything, but this is actually coming from the National Honor Society, and they're saying we're not allowed to do it.
If that's what they're saying, I guess I have to accept it. However, I don't think it's going to end there for me. That just doesn't make any sense.
It doesn't make sense to me.
My son is a matriculated St. John student. The St. John Education Department is responsible for his education, fiscally, whatever. But now all of a sudden, because it's difficult, they get to jettison him. I'm not accepting that. It's not the end of the line.
So when I spoke to them yesterday, I've been in contact with them for several days now, and I gave them several scenarios, what if we had a student who had been bullied and became drawn, and because of that, we had to send them out of district, and that child was still potentially a candidate for the National Honor Society? I said, can we do anything in that case? They said, no, they can't. So, you know, if you want to pursue it further, I'd be happy to pursue it with you, because I disagree with it also.
I appreciate Dr. Sullivan, and that we'll be reaching out to you on behalf of not just my son, but the other students who are deserving of that honor. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Vice Chair Burke?
Hello, to answer some of the concerns, we offer participation in two honor societies. Dr. Sullivan, you've been speaking about the National Honor Society. Is the Rhode Island Honor Society different, and do they have different requirements and qualifications? That may not apply to that.
I don't know. I haven't been involved with the National Honor Society until this year in order to pursue this issue for out-of-district schools, so I have to reach out to the people who are heading this at the high school.
So Mrs. Kupiskas, where do Rhode Island Honor Society, since it's not a national problem, rather it's a state one, maybe I have some different avenues we haven't yet explored?
And I understand that, and I'm perfectly willing to do so, but my son academically would qualify for the National Honor Society. And it just seems to me that at this point, based on what I'm learning, your policy is different for him. And perhaps my issue is with them as well, as they're moving.
Go again, Mrs. Kupiskas. I agree with you.
I could just interject. I didn't know that the legality or the legal question had been raised by Dr. Sullivan with the National Honor Society. I would be happy for our office to take a look at whatever is being touted by the National Honor Society as the basis for their decision to exclude on the basis of disability. Because without delving into it, I agree with Mrs. Kupiskas, that this is the school under Rhode Island state law, this is the LEA that is his LEA. This is, we are responsible for him under state law for his educational services. The fact that he might access those services in a different location is irrelevant. And I am wondering what the National Honor Society is basing their decision on with regard to a school or a program, and whether there might be some argument we can make with them that their prohibition is either misguided or unlawful, or perhaps not understanding the way Rhode Island law operates. I'm happy to help if we can.
So yeah, I thought when I was speaking to them, I thought I must be misunderstanding what they were saying, so I ended it by asking them, I sent them an email and asked them to clarify the writing, so I have the writing from them. So I'll show that to you anyway, and then we can pursue it.
And I mean, I'm happy to help if the committee would like for us to.
I think you should, I think you should.
Okay. You should look into this, because this is definitely prejudicial. We have students who are A students. My God, don't we love to have A students. And now we can't even honor them because of some rule out of Virginia. I would strongly urge that you look into this, and hopefully we can get to a satisfactory conclusion. I'll rehearse on the other case.
I will, I will. I want to be, I think that's helpful.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss Goodwill Industries. Is there a second?
Second.
For those of you who are unfamiliar with Goodwill Industries, Goodwill Rhode Island, they're a nonprofit organization that gathers stuff, clothes, computers, laptops, audio equipment, shelving, toys. They actually have a store in Outlaw where they sell the goods. They collect clothes. We have one right out here, as you come into our entrance, and we have bins, and here they are. At the high school, the middle school, at Globe Park, Vernon Heights, Leo Savoy, Kevin Coleman, and Harris. There's none at Citizens Port here, because the director of donations didn't know we had a school that was Citizens Port here. So I've asked them to look into it, maybe talk to our administration, our administration, to put a bin out there. But what's really interesting about this, many of us, most of us give clothes away. We put them in a bin, we give Salvation Army. But if you put them in these bins, what they do is they accept all of it, and we, the school district, would get paid four cents a pound. That doesn't sound like much, but you fill those bins, it's a lot of poundage. And so the money would come into the schools. And it's another way to attract, to get the community involved with an organization that works with the poor, with the needy. They take some of those clothes and they actually give them to folks that are in need. They help people who are recovering, you know, recovering alcoholics or drug addicts, people who just need some help, that provides food in locations, you know, bed to sleep in at times. This group here, who speaks to us, have rotated in this past, the last couple of weeks. And I thought it made sense to address this as an issue for our school, for our school committee and for our district, because I had no idea that all the stuff that I've been giving away in Salvation Army could actually benefit our school district. They'll take old computers, old monitors, whatever you have, and it's four cents a pound. My goodness. So I encourage all of us here and all of Miss Bubble's audience out there, and our school district cameraman, to get out there, think about the junk that you want to get rid of, make it in good clothes that don't fit, all of a sudden the clothes got too small for whoever you are. And I would recommend that you put them in our bins. You've got pretty much all the schools, and sooner or later they'll have them in citizens'. That's all I have to add.
Chairman?
Yes.
There's also a very benefit to it, in that many people will throw away these items, drag them, nor maybe them, being able to pull these out of the landfill or pay the cost to actually take this, it's just something that is good. So a highly advantageous as well.
I think it's a great idea, it's good for the folks, it's good for the, but it's going to be also good for our district. Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the fiscal '20 preliminary general fund budget. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Perier?
Albert Way. Thank you, Superintendent McGee, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
In front of you, you have the budget lead sheet and the personnel supplement for our fiscal year '20 general fund budget preliminary. Mr. Chairman, Chairman Borjett did talk about this a little bit earlier, about how the budget was developed a little bit differently this year. Because of the uncertainty with the current contract situation, the personnel supplement was built with just steps. We have not factored in any potential raises to go out to teachers' board TAs. As the 1137 contract is completed, we were able to factor that in and build that up as we projected. The way I basically see this happening is, when the contracts are finalized down the road, whenever that happens, I think at that point, the finance subcommittee will need to re-mean, kind of take a look at the budget again, rebuild it from the ground up. Based on this personnel supplement, I don't see any changes, but I certainly see the amounts changing. Once we get that information, at that point, we'll be able to better shape the rest of the budget. As everyone here knows, 80% of the budget is personnel and benefits. And because I don't have a strong feeling about that, or a strong indication as to where we're going to fall, it's difficult to shape the rest of the budget. That includes technology, facilities, upgrades, building improvements. So we do have some placeholders in here, and again, the reason this budget is coming to you right now is because it's due to the city in May 1. So we have to have a budget in hand to them, so that they're able to roll it up and present the budget to the city council. So again, we've taken the information we had, we've put together a budget based on that. But again, looking down the road, I do see us revisiting this, whenever the contract is wrapped up, and then doing an amendment to the fiscal year '20 budget.
Absolutely, and if you'll notice, one of the things that we've included in there is an increase in the maintenance effort from the city of $250,000. And that is tentative. Remember, this budget is preliminary. And those funds could go away if the contracts are not finalized by the middle of the month. Middle of May, towards the end of May, that's not done, that's not wrapped, then this could go away. Also, there may be some changes in the state funding, but you know what? We don't know yet. Nothing's fine. So we have to wait until, like I say, Mr. Perier, there's no way that we can finalize this budget with sending it to the state as a preliminary general budget. And they're going to have to include that in the mix and go from there. And then, as Mr. Perier says, we'll meet again, you know, come back to the committee adjusted, and we'll present it, we'll give it to the city and to us, and we'll, when all of them is finalized.
And we can continue, I know this is kind of a new dynamic here with the school committee. We often did a group meeting when the city council handled the school committee, kind of reviewing the budget. And I feel at this time, because there's so much uncertainty, it's really not a good use of everyone's time. But when the budget does get finalized, I think that's a really great thing, just to kind of communicate out to not only you fellows in the school committee, but also with the city council and bring everybody got on board and into sync with what's going on.
Mr. Perier, I agree with that. I will reach out to the city council president once we finalize our budget, to see if we can have the combined meeting like we've had in the past. And this way they'll have a better understanding of what we're stating.
Mr. Chairman, you could also explain to the city council president how this is preliminary and why that's a deadline to the top two.
I plan on doing that next week, early next week.
And I've been in contact with Mr. Paul Louba, the fiscal overseer for the city of St. John. He understands the situation right now, and he does understand what's happening in terms of the budget.
Anybody else?
So were there any considerations, or what was your thought process around medical given what we saw this year?
We've increased it up to a little over $9 million. Right now, we're trending at about $9.23. I see that going down a little bit more at the end of the year. I also see co-pays unfortunately going up next year, and I think that's going to close that gap down a little bit as to what we're looking at this year. So we've increased the budget line tremendously over what we had budgeted for fiscal year '19, going into fiscal year '20. Still haven't received the working rates yet. I shouldn't be getting them in the next week or so.
That's why everything's so preliminary, it's all in here. Anyone else? Dr. McGee will call.
Chairman Borjett?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Catwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Nato?
Yes.
Mrs. Kupiskas?
We've come to that point in the meeting where we turn it over to the superintendent for his report. Yes, we get it. Here we are.
So, Mr. Chairman, members of the school committee, I have two items that I'd like to report out to you. The first is an update on the, I have two central office positions, which have been vacant for the entire school year. The first is the human resources and labor relations director, and the second is the facilities, transportation, and security director. So I'd like the committee to know that for the human resources, labor relations position, we have received approximately 12 folks who have applied through school spring?
Yes.
For those positions. And for the facilities director, we have approximately 16. The plan is that those applications will be vetted, and that interviews will begin next week. We're looking to vet those, each of those to four folks who will be interviewed for each of those two positions. And it is the goal that at the next school committee meeting, I will have two meetings to bring forward the school committee's recognition.
Excellent.
Secondly, the high school graduation rate was released, the rates were released by the Department of Education this week. And in your packet, or on your computer, I should say, you have, there are three. I'm just going to go to the first one here. You have three files here. The first lists the graduation year, year of graduation. First column, second column is St. John High School's graduation rate, third column is Rhode Island's. And then I've included in there Providence, Kentucky, and Central Falls, as those three districts plus St. John gave up the urban core. So the good news is that the high school's graduation rate has increased this year, or I should say last year, to 73%. The bad news is that it's at 73%. I've said this many times over the last five years. Although I'm happy that we, each year, almost each year, if you look at from 2011, we've improved our graduation rate, 73% is still unexempt. So I'll just give you one opportunity just to review that yourselves here for a moment. And I'll continue.
It's kind of easy to review.
It is.
Because the numbers are not that good.
No, no. I would say that if you look at, if you compare St. John, certainly from 2011, we've increased by 10%. If you go to 2014, we dipped extremely low to 58%. If you take from 2014 on, and you compare St. John to the state, to Providence, Kentucky, and Central Falls, we have made the most dramatic increase. That's the good news. The bad news is, you know, we're getting closer, but we are still below us in the state. And, you know, as I said, that isn't something that I'm proud of. I'm pleased that we are making gains, but we certainly have much more work to do. There are a couple of other graphs that you have here, St. John versus the state. It's basically what you just saw, but it's a line graph. And it just shows you from 2011 to 2018, last year's graduating class. You know, if you look at, obviously, 2014 was that 58% year, and the gap between the state and St. John was pretty great. We are, we're closing the gap, albeit not as quickly as I would like.
I guess the question is, I know that there was some thoughts... I guess the question is, I know that there was some thoughts a few years ago that it was a matter of fact gathering, data gathering, that we were not gathering all the data that we should in tracking student movement.
Yes.
Is that the improvement we're seeing? Or is it truly an increase in graduation rate? Said another way, 2011, maybe we weren't doing so well in tracking students. Well, we're doing a lot better in '18. So that is, that does not tell me that the grad rate is better. It just tells me we're gathering our data better.
Right. So I think it's a variety of gains. I think that the data part is definitely improved. I think that we're at a point now where, you know, we have a handle on that data and the data we submit to ride. I would also say that things like the PM, the evening school, the after-school program that we provide our students at the high school, those are students that are over eighty and under credit. I can tell you, last year alone, we graduated five students from that program. Those are five students that otherwise would have been statistics without a grant. I can tell you also the freshman academy or the Success 101 that we started at the high school approximately four or five years ago. We're seeing the effects of that. And certainly in last year's graduation rate of 73%, I believe that would have been the first graduating class that started as freshmen with the Success 101. So I think, you know, to answer your question, I think that yes to data and yes to other programs and opportunities that we put in place at the high school for our students, I think we're sort of reaping the benefits of all of those.
Because we're hoping that '19 can show an increase.
We are, we are, yes.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, Dr. Sullivan, remember we had a discussion about the, I think I would call the extended students, I call it extra two years. They don't take a diploma.
Into the transition program, yes.
We're going to speak with someone at the state to see how those students who have traditionally graduated but did not get a diploma can add to our graduation rate instead of taking a waiting program.
The regional group that I meet with, the northern region of special ed directors, we brought that up in a number of meetings. And the person who runs those meetings, Brian Quig, is the one that has been taking it up further. But it's not just us. I mean, there's so many other districts that have the same thing. But you're right, we do have a large number of students that have extended years because they need the transition program.
Do you have any other final answer?
Now, the state right now, they count as students that didn't graduate because it usually takes them about eight years after, you know, from their freshman year. They stay till the 21.
And those enhancers, that's going to be slow.
No, and the problem is, I mean, if somebody, we could give them a diploma and allow them to our transition program and that would increase our graduation rate. But then we have a problem that any one of those students.